Good evening, everyone. Thanks for tuning in. This isn't a town hall, this is a church, but you know, you get the drift. We're having a town hall meeting tonight. There's... Let's start all with a prayer, okay? In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. During this month of May, we remember our Lady as we pray together, Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now at the hour of our death, amen. St. Linus, pray for us, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Okay. There are a lot of things involved I'm gonna be talking about tonight. I may miss a few things, or you may have questions about some things. It's fine, just send me your questions in the chat, I'll try to answer them. And if I can't, I'll tell you I can't, okay? I don't have all the answers, but I'm trying to come as close as I can. Because there's so much involved. You know, the more you look at it, the more the notes I looked at from the diocese, and the more I looked at our building, and how we have everything, it just got a little bit more kind of overwhelming. But, that being said, we are... We are... We're gonna... If you're patient with me, and I'm patient with you, and we practice that, I was telling them the other day, to practice that Christian love that we have, we're supposed to have, I think we'll be okay, alright? It's gonna be hard for some people. Maybe if they have a hard time with certain aspects of what's going on. We're not trying to be difficult, just to let you know. And of course, only the bottom line for everything that we're doing, we're trying to do here, is to make sure that the virus doesn't spread, and that people are safe. So, it's nothing personal, you know? And I hope that whoever helps us in the parish doesn't get too rough with you when they talk to you. But anyway, we'll try to do the best we can. Anyway, so this is about returning to Mass. As parishes, we prepare this Sunday. All the faithful in the archdiocese, or most of them, even though... I mean, all the faithful, all the parishes, I should say, have the opportunity to open. We're going to choose that opportunity to open, so we will be open for Mass beginning this weekend. The following weekend is the actual day. The governor lifts the order. We don't know what that means at this time, but we can still come get together. And we're gonna stick with these regulations, these by the diocese. Most of them are by the diocese, until we... Well, until we probably... Until they say it's okay. So, just number one, to know that all the faithful in the archdiocese of Detroit are dispensed from the obligation to attend Sunday Mass through September, Sunday, September 6th, 2020. What does that mean? That means, you know, that you can observe, you can not have to come to Mass. You can continue to watch on video, as you have, many of you have done, online, or on video, live stream, etc., okay? That... And you don't, and you will not, okay, I repeat, not incur a sin, a mortal sin, because that obligation has been lifted. And the Archbishop has the authority to do that, okay? He's not going against anything that Rome would not designate for him as Archbishop. And so, that... So, you don't have to worry about coming to Mass. If you're feeling... If you're... You suggest you meet somebody over 65, okay? That might be a little young for some of us, getting close to that. But 65 or older, those who are ill, not feeling well, who have weakened systems, you do not have to come. Even if you're scared. If you're scared to come, you don't want to be proud just yet, that's fine. That being said, the obligation that... We need to still observe the Lord's Day, okay? And that's to spend time in prayer. Like I said, maybe you can watch it on the video, a video of the Mass on TV. Spend time in prayer, meditate on the Lord's Passion, Death and Resurrection, and participate maybe in a spiritual or corporal act of mercy, okay? So, that's still fulfilling your obligation, okay? And so, don't feel like, "Oh, I have to go." No, you don't have to go, okay? We would suggest, if you do have a compromise system, please, please stay home. It's not... I don't want... I wanna see you all. That's not the point. The point is, I want you to be safe. And we don't want... You don't want to get sick and feel awful, you guys sit here. As part of this new phase of response, we keep remembering that weekday Mass can provide another opportunity to celebrate the Eucharist. So, if you're... If you say, "Well, I have this big crowd, I'm scared to go, and I wanna receive an Eucharist," well, maybe come during the week, okay? Obviously, once the Sunday, September 6th, that's where we're at on Sunday. But until then, why not come to weekday Mass and receive as well? We have plenty of room. We may have to clean a little bit more, but that's okay. It's worth it if you're feeling safer, okay? So, you can still participate in the Eucharist, even off of Sunday. Let's see. If you have, and you have a temperature, or you're ill, or you're coughed, please, stay home, because we definitely don't want anybody getting sick. And that would apply to me, if I get sick. Unfortunately, that means no Mass, but we'll just pray for my health. Physical distancing is to be observed as identified by sign, state, and other means. First thing I'm gonna say is, masks are required by everyone, except those two years old and under, okay? If you're not wearing a mask, we ask to leave, in order that everyone remains safe, okay? That's, you know, you may return, of course, if you obtain a mask and it's acceptable. And that's non-negotiable, as required by the archdiocese for every parish. So, again, I'm not trying to be mean, but I'm only emphasizing it because I don't want you to forget. Keep it by your door. Put it somewhere where you have it handy, keep it in your car. Whatever you need to do to have your mask with you, okay? I don't like turning it away as much as you wouldn't want me to turn it away, but that's what we have to do, okay? Sanitizer will be available at all the doors, okay? We got, and we just got a free gallon of sanitizer. I don't know how long they'll last, but we got a free gallon from the archdiocese. So, that'll help us for a little while. So, and I would suggest sanitize when you come in, and sanitize when you leave, okay? You know, because doors can be... Have germs on, etc. Also, if you have some sanitizer that you carry with you, you might want to do that just before you receive communion, okay? It's not, you know, it would be helpful. I will have something around... I'll go over that when we go over communion, like sanitizers. I'm gonna sanitize my hands anyway, with regular sanitizer. But there's other things, too. As said, masks will be limited in attendance, depending on the guidelines by a couple of authorities. That's 25% of our legal capacity in the church, okay? Now, we're figuring about 175 people for St. Linus, okay? Ray, I think... Ray, Ray and myself, we would be... Ed brought over some chairs today, plastic chairs. I know you're gonna be upset, the cloth chairs aren't on, okay? We moved them out because the cloth is harder to clean, keep sanitized. So, we put plastic chairs in, okay? If you need a pad, bring one with you, okay? But we have plastic chairs here. We rounded them up, extra seating. I think John's filming that on the video for the TV. So, but we have extra chairs in the back. If we need overflow, we are going to have something ready. I don't think we'll need it, but if we do need overflow, we'll provide it in the activities room. And that way, you can watch, you can still watch it on video, the Mass, it'll be live, but somebody will come and give you communion, okay? But we have to figure that right now is, we don't think that that's gonna be necessary, okay? Do you have a question? If there is an attached space, let's... Yeah, so seating, and then seating, those living in the same household, okay, when you come to Mass. If there's a family to come, or just a couple of you, however big your family is, two to however many, you can sit together without, you know, the distancing, okay? And, but it holds that you still distance yourself from others, okay? So, if you have little children, I know it's hard to keep them in one place. Try to do your best to keep them in one place. If you don't think they can, then I wouldn't bring them, but but as long as you have an area, you don't want them getting sick. You'd feel horrible about that. So, let's see. For distribution of holy communion, everybody will ask to come up single file, one queue at a time, keeping the social distance of six feet in front and back of a person, unless you live in the same household, okay? The floor is marked, where you may stand while waiting. We have marked it on the blue tape. It's hard to say six... A single file is a little bit difficult. And if you like, say, if you have sanitizer, please sanitize it, we're coming for communion. And to the extent possible, the priests and ministers should remain six feet apart from each other. So, that's indicated here. You'll see a couple of blue dots on the floor. John's got them on his camera. And so, we try to turn to a single file. Again, it's gonna take a little longer, where we have to practice patience. And so, there will ask, as we begin attending Masses 2, we will ask fewer people to enter the sanctuary area here, unless asked to. And no one is to enter the sanctuary, okay? That's kind of off limits for right now, okay? But the sanctuary area here, you know, unless you have something specifically you are doing, or we're asking you to do... What else? Hello? Okay. And then, so, there'll be fewer people entering the sanctuary. There will also be less people fulfilling roles in order to prevent the spread of the virus. So, the roles will be downsized for now. We find it necessary, for example, to have a server to help, someone will be asked, okay? At this time, there are no plans to have anyone serve, okay? If you look around the sanctuary, you'll see there's a stand where the book is, that I pray, I say, "Let us pray." There's a stand there, nobody holding it. I'll be up here, probably the only one besides myself will be the deacon, and then when the Eucharistic ministers come up. That's gonna be a little trickier, because they have to stay a little bit away, but we'll figure that out as we go. But we will only have... I'll get to that in a minute, the stations. So, there'll be less people fulfilling those roles, and no servers so far. Until we are sure that the spread of the virus has diminished, we ask that the sacrosanits not set up for Mass until the month of July, okay? So, I give you the full month of June off, even after you've been off for all this time, and I'm sorry about that. I know how you love to do that. And I love it when you do, because you all do such a great job. But just to be safe, we don't want anybody to sacrifice me, and it minimizes any germ spreading at all. So, from now until July, I will be setting up, and/or the deacon, when he's here for Mass, okay? So, or both of us. But we'll be setting up for Mass, and then you don't have to worry about it. And I know people will want to jump up and help, too, so try to hold back. Also, we will ask one person to fulfill the role of lecturer for each Mass. So, one person will do the readings, and if the deacon isn't here, then they will do the verse, okay? Also, there will be only four stations for holy communion, to minimize the possibility of contamination and infection. It seems like, oh, you know, it's gonna be longer anyway for communion, now your time is, you know, there's only four stations. We really don't want this to spread. We're together. We want you to be safe, and so, the less people we have, the less spreading of germs, okay? So, if the deacon's here, we'll have two people giving communion with us. If there's... If the deacon's not here, we'll ask three, okay? So, and there, and because of those crosses, we touch those crosses, if we put them on, we're not gonna have the crosses for the ministers, okay? So, unless you don't see anybody coming up at all, and you want to jump up and do it, we probably won't, we'll ask a couple of people, or two or three people. Or, what I would say is, let's see. If you want to volunteer, you want to volunteer for a specific Mass, or a Mass of... Then I would call, if you want a lecturer, or be an Eucharistic minister, a particular Mass, please call Barb in the office, and she can schedule it, okay? I think it would be, you know, that way, if you really want to do something, then you can do it, but otherwise, we'll be asking people, okay? So, if you're not, if there's nobody scheduled, you know, you may, deacon Dan or myself may walk up and say, "Do you mind?" And hopefully, you won't mind, okay? We ask the ushers, so the ushers now are coming to have them. Please stand by to help facilitate the movement of people to the seats where everything's indicated. You see that things are taped off? If you're usher, and you want to first, when you first get here, you want to walk and look at the seating, that's fine. Everybody will have a mask on themselves, but just don't walk too close to people, because people will be a little upset. But you can walk around and look and see, okay, this is where I can sit, okay? But your first job would be at the door. We want two ushers, one usher at each door, and making sure whoever comes in has a mask on, okay? And again, I ask the ushers to please be cheerful and nice when you ask them, okay? Do not, you know, don't be needful, just to say, "We need you to have your mask on," and that's a player. So, if that's a... And if you have a problem as an usher doing that, then maybe you can ask another usher, okay? So, so those are the things for ushers, kind of immediately at the beginning of Mass, okay? For the end of Mass, we're gonna be, our collection, we won't take a regular collection of baskets, with the big bowls. We will have baskets at each door. We'll have one, two, three, four, okay? And there'll be big baskets, so they can't miss it, hopefully, throw it in there. All you have, all you want is four ushers to stand by in those baskets. Edge of the back here, in the back here, we could have one watching both of them. So, we could have at least three, okay? They're watching the baskets, and then I have one usher out of those three or four that will collect the baskets. I don't want everybody touching the baskets, okay? One usher collects the baskets, puts that all together, and then they go into the sanctuary, like they normally do, okay? So, that's the ushers. I don't think that there's anything else. You can, you can... I know people might come in not sure what to do, and if you want to field a question to me or to the deacon, please do so, okay? Just say, just don't come into the sanctuary, just knock on the sanctuary door, and we'll come out to you, okay? And then we'll try to answer the question, or help the person as much as we can, okay? I haven't covered anything with anointing, if people need to be anointed, but I'm hoping if you're sick, you're not here. But if somebody needs an anointing, maybe for a surgery or something, I have a means of doing that. It'll be a little difficult. Might take me a couple extra minutes to get myself ready, but we can do that, but we have to do it, and it's a big part of the church, you know? We don't want to have, we don't want to be in a closed area, so it won't be in the sanctuary, and it won't be in the chapel, it'll be in the church, okay? Let's see. Oh, Ray has published on Facebook and on our website, what's happening in regards to music and singing through the clergy, okay? Just in, just kind of a quick thing, as we're minimizing music, I mean, in a certain sense. Our singing. Singing, apparently, when you're singing out, you're spreading, you know, you're more, you know, you put a lot more behind it, so you're actually... You just spread the germs a little farther, even. And even though they got a mask on, they're worried that it's gonna spread more, okay? Plus, I guess if you see, if you've got a mask on, it's gonna sound like a bunch of muffled people, I don't know. I haven't heard a bunch of people with masks on singing, so I couldn't tell you. But anyways, he's got some little tips and things on singing. I don't think there's gonna be very, very good at singing, okay? It's gonna be kind of like Lent, almost, like we do for Lent. Now, also, we're looking for healthy volunteers to help clean and disinfect the church in between Masses, okay? We especially need volunteers after the weekend Masses, but we probably could use a few after the daily Masses, okay? Please let Barb in the office know. And it would be good, we could establish like cleaning crews, like so many people that are regular, you know, that are more regular, and then they'll help, you know? And then if people want to kind of say, "Well, I can't do this weekend, but I could do like this weekend and this weekend," and you just talk to the Mass, the crew that works, and then hopefully, we can get you working with them. So, we're always, you know, you don't have to be, you don't have to have this obligation every single week, you can, you know? But we would like some that would like to do that more often, okay? So, thank you. Thank you ahead of time, like a lot of cases said. The auditory, there's a couple things will be done omitted, the auditory procession. So, no bringing up the gifts. Everything will be upstairs here and set up, okay? The, until further notice. Also, that exchange of peace will be omitted. What I'm gonna tell people like here at daily Mass. Okay, we won't, I won't say, let us offer each other signs, because the deacon won't say it. But what, but you all know when that part comes, so if you want to just turn to your neighbor and give a little nod, you know, just don't shake hands, and, you know, don't scream out "Hi," you know? Okay? Just turn and give a little nod, you know? Most people know, it's a friendly greeting, so we won't say it, but if you want to do it, you can do it, and not just say it, right? Couple more things. Okay. Tonight, if you watched Mass tonight, I made a big mistake. I didn't have my mask on when I gave communion out, so that's a no-no for me. That's the only time I would be, besides coming up to the altar, probably holding my mask on me, and then when I leave. But when I'm giving out communion, I'll be putting it out, so it'll take me a couple minutes. But I give communion with a mask on, keep you safe, keep me safe, okay? And so, we'll put on a mask, and we'll ask the, we'll make sure that the, I mean, as soon as everybody else got their mask on, we shouldn't have to ask anybody to do that. Holy communion may not be distributed with gloves, okay? So, we do bare hands to handle the sacrament. And it's also received with bare hands, okay? So, you can't, if you have gloves on and you're scared, you know, you have a mask to take your glove off, unfortunately, okay? So, try, we're gonna sanitize our hands before we start giving out communion, all of us will. So, we've got two hands. Now, in front, you'll see a little dish and a towel, right in front down here. What goes in that, it's gonna look like water, but it's not water. It's rubbing, it's alcohol, straight alcohol, okay? That will be by us, by the ministers, okay, who's giving out communion. That will kill anything, any kind of... So, if we touch a hand, if we touch, if somebody sees in the mouth, we touch a mouth, by any chance, our hands will go in there. Now, again, it might take a second or two, because we gotta clean our hands off, and then we'll continue giving out communion. But just make sure, when you receive, that you have, one is you have bare hands. And then they ask you, you'd be like from myself, whoever else is receiving, you come up to the, you don't come entirely up to us. You still stay a six-feet distance and stay there, and we say the body of Christ. Then you come forward to receive, okay? And your mask will be off, okay? So, that way, I'm saying it to you, you're saying it to me, even with your mask off, you won't get infected by a person, okay? My mask will remain on. So, they'll give you, they'll give you, they'll say, "Amen." I know it's a long ways away, but say, "Amen." Just come forward. If you have, if you're receiving in a hand, if you're right-handed, it goes underneath, okay? Your hand goes flat, okay? I will go over this on Sunday, and I'll probably over-instruct everybody on it. But please, make sure your hand is flat. I had a couple people, you know, since I had spread, you know, they had their hands like this, or... No, if you're arthritic, that's fine, as flat as you can, that's all. I'm not asking for your miracle, okay? Just make it easier for us to put it in your hand, okay? And so, we don't touch your hand. And if you're left, if you're left-handed, then the left hand goes underneath, okay? This is not how you receive, okay? You don't take communion from me. You don't grab it, okay? You receive it, so you're putting your hand out to receive it. Reforma, they say, a little throne, that's what we're taught kids. I never got taught that, listen. I didn't receive, we didn't receive with the hand, and I was... But that's how we taught kids, that's a throne, and we put that in for Jesus, okay? If you're receiving in the mouth, I need a target, okay? This doesn't work, okay? And, you know, and then also, you know, when we're putting it in your mouth, if you're receiving on the tongue, just keep your tongue in one place, you know? Don't move your head around, okay? Because it's important to, you know, I know, it sounds picky and everything, but it's just, like I said, try not to spread germs, okay? Just hold your, just hold your mouth back, like that, you know? I probably don't do it that way, well, anyway. I look that way most of the time. But anyway, so, but really, we're not, I'm not, we're not gonna refuse anybody that wants to receive on the tongue. But I would ask, okay, first of all, we would encourage you to receive in the hand, okay? If you feel that strongly about receiving in the tongue, that's fine. But please, I, we want to, we want you to wait till last. It's a little more complicated to give communion in the mouth, okay? So, we want you to wait till last, not because you're bad, or we don't like that. That's not, that's not the case. It's because we want to make sure that, you know, we do this right, and we can take our time, okay? So, anyway, so if that's, if you feel strongly about that, I will not object, okay? I'm fine with that. So, again, you give your bow, your new vow, and then announcing the body of Christ, and then you come up and receive. And then we'll try, we'll try to avoid and say, "Touch him," and if we do, we'll go over to, "Well, the alcohol, that'll kill all the germs and everything." It takes less time than trying to do sanitizer hands with the sanitizer. And we won't do that between everybody, it's just when we touch, somebody touches us. I think, just once again, to remember... I think just once again, to remember, I will continue to tell you that, you know, you don't have to come. And again, it's not, it's not because I don't want you here. I really, really want you, but I don't want you getting sick even more. So as hard as it may be, you may want to avoid coming on Sunday for a little while. Or so that everybody can, maybe to receive, maybe it goes Sunday every other week, until we're, until, you know, just so that, you know, you keep the crowds down, okay? And then like I say, during the week, it's a good alternative, I think, especially if you want to receive at Eucharist, okay? And I know it's not as joyful or big as the Sunday Mass, but it's, but it's still Jesus, and He still loves you, and He wants you to come to Him, okay? I think what I have to say is pretty much done. Mr. Ray here has been taking questions, or questions, no questions. Just one? Again, if you forget a Mass for one new provider, the problem is, okay, we can, but we're gonna sell it to you, okay? Only because, I'm not selling it to you, but we ask for a donation of a dollar. Because there's a limited amount, and also, we're not sure if we'll have one every week. So we don't want people relying on the fact, "Well, if I don't have a mask, I just..." You know, they'll give you one, but we may not have one. You know, and then you do have to pay. So I would, again, I'd love to provide it for you. We, there's, you know, we just ask for a donation of a dollar, okay? And we do have some extra ones. Those were donated, by the way, but they cost money, it costs money. So we want to make sure that, I mean, if we run low, maybe somebody would want to donate, donate some more to us, okay? So that's the only question for you? Well, thank you for listening tonight. I, you know, it's, I bet telling this to everybody, the last couple Masss, now we had two Masses now since it started. Tuesday was the official opening. But I, you know, we're all learning, okay? I am just as much learning as you are, okay? It's all new. It's never happened before in my lifetime, or probably your lifetime. We don't know what's going on half the time, you know? We don't know what government officials are gonna say, what, when. We get mixed signals, we get all kinds of things. Bottom line, as I said, right off the bat, we want you to be safe. We want you to be, we want, we want you here eventually, okay? And if you need anything, okay, please let us know. I didn't cover, one thing I did cover. If you have a loved one who is ill and home, okay? We still have people that visit. We would like more to volunteer to visit if we could, using the same safety practices, okay, we have to make sure you keep safe. But if you have a loved one that's ill at home, and you have a pitz to read communion, we can have, we can provide that for you, okay? It might be, you know, we can't, we can't visit everybody, so sometimes that's a good option. I visit once in a while, it's just hard for me to do it with so many people, but... Oh, can we have a prayer or a meeting, somebody asked? Well, I think prayer is great. As of now, the diocese still is, I specifically asked bishop Battersby, but we had a meeting last week about people in the building, and in the buildings on this proper, and they, he said, "Until further notice, no one is to come in the buildings." We're still limited, you know, our offices are limited in hours, some are closed, all that. So it's all remains the same, unfortunately. They're just opening this up mainly for worship, the Mass, not prayer, okay? Again, you can do prayer, consider prayer group meetings if you have access to internet or whatever. I know that's not, that's a poor substitute for being in person. But I would, I don't like to tell, I tend to tell people tonight at the Mass, "You have to go right away." I mean, and that's another thing, is when we're finished here at Mass, we have to go. And we can't wait around. You can take a minute or two maybe to do a Thanksgiving, but then we have to go right away. Just to keep, like I say, to keep the spread of germs down. People who need to clean in between Masses are gonna need to clean, those kinds of things. But until we get here further, we can't have any meetings at all here, okay? No get-togethers. Again, I'm just as disappointed as you in that regard. There's so much, I really got emotional when I saw, you know, the first Mass here. Because I've seen some of these people who have seen them for a long time, you know, face to face. And so we want to see people, we want to visit with people, we want to be with people. I want to be with you. But we can't, unfortunately, not the way we were, okay? So hopefully, I really want to, you know, got any more questions? One pop up? No?
Mass time church.
What's that?
Eight-thirty Sunday? Mass time?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Just a reminder, we advertised it, but you need to know, Mass is at eight-thirty AM on Sunday. That is so we can clean the church in between Masses, okay? We had a half an hour to be able to clean. So if you're a nine-to-five person, fortunately, you gotta get up a half hour early. But you get a half an hour extra of your day, so, you know. Eight-thirty and eleven, so, okay? Four o'clock remains the same, eleven remains the same. Eight-thirty, that's, because that's the tightest two times of Masses, they're closest together. So we had to bring that out, so we had eight-thirty and eleven, okay? And I know we usually have an eight-thirty Mass every week, so I thought that would be easier for people to have to call, "Oh, eight-thirty," you know? So please, put that out in your calendar, or schedule it, I'll be willing to do it, okay? We want to make sure we're not... I have a couple of masks. I got one, Mr. Ray gave that, one of these official ones, you know? My head's so big, I keep snapping at things, but... And then you have your average, your regular masks, okay? And those go around a hundred years, okay? Most people have those kind of.
Confessions?
Oh, confessions, hold on. I'm still looking at confessions. This weekend, we will not have, I mean, we'll have the public confessions like normal. It's the same kind of thing with the prayer gathering of people. I'm afraid outside of Mass, we can't gather a bunch of people, and we have to be safe. I still, I still take appointments, okay? So you can go to confession, you just have to call me, okay? And so the order from the government gets lifted next week, okay? So what I'm wanting, I want to hear, I want to hear confessions, but as of right now, I want to see, I'm checking to see, I may have to do them in the morning, because I'm not sure running into the Mass times. We're gonna hear confessions. We do know where we're going to hear them, and that's gonna be in the chapel, okay? So the chapel, it'll be in the chapel either before the four o'clock Mass, like the usual time, okay? Or we'll do it in the morning, okay? But we will communicate that to you, trying to make sure we communicate as much to you as possible, okay? So I do not want people to even miss the confession, all right? You do not have to confess that you missed Mass unless it was before the whole pandemic's there, okay? You don't have to confess that, not a malice, all right? Thanks for bringing that up, Barb. So I'm not sure what else we got. Oh, RCIA, we're still working on that, and we contacted the deacon. And I'm hoping we can get a couple of baptisms. We have a couple that are getting ready to be baptized. We saw it at the eleven o'clock Mass a few times. The young, oh boy, they're gonna kill me for not remembering their names. Anyway, and we have an adult who's gonna be married next month. So he's gonna be receiving confirmation of his communion, he's a Catholic. So we'll have those hopefully at one of the Masses, it'll be really nice to have them. And then that's RCIA. And I think that's about it. We have to wait and see how, like I say, how many people can gather in public with other things, and see how the government has a new order, what's, this one explicitly what it expected us, okay? We want, let's see, we want to follow everything only so that people won't get sick, okay? You have any more questions? Anything up here?
I just got one that said, "A Mass will be broadcast at eight-thirty," and I'm like, "Yes."
Yes, yes, and also, the Mass will be broadcast at that time at eight-thirty, okay? If you're worried you'll miss it, record it. Because if you're on cable, I think most people have the ability to record it. So record it if you can. Unfortunately, that channel, we have that like a four-hour block of time, which is kind of crazy, but at least I'm right at that worth of, "Wow, you have to record the little four hours." And then I just fast-forward to where I need to be. So you can record it too. And then we'll have, I'm trying to make sure we record the liturgies for post of... We'll livestream some of them, we'll also YouTube. I'll try to YouTube as many as I can, okay? I missed one day this week, but I'm trying to make sure that that gets covered, okay? Well, again, if you have more questions about anything, we can try to answer. Just call us at the office, okay? And or email us, email me, whatever. And we'll try to make sure we get that question answered for you. I'm really, you know, thankful for those who have volunteered so far. I, you know, I had a couple people that talked to me about having some things covered. That's really great. If you're an older person that does ushering or other, a eucharistic minister, I would probably suggest, just for now, that you not fulfill that function as of yet, okay? We'll have, you know, we could have some people cover that for now. And then, but that way, that way, they say, we can be safe, and nobody could be compromised. All right, well, unless you have any other questions, we're gonna ask the Lord to bless you, okay? So may, so the Lord be with you.
With you, sir.
May Almighty God bless you, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Sleep well, thank God, worship God in peace.